There's a curb machine that drove in there and they...
You're actually, it's actually a misconception, you're not freeze drying them.
You put them in freezer?
It's actually the back, no, a freeze dryer.
Oh.
But it's actually the back and when it kicks on, they don't freeze.
On tumble, you put them on tumble cycle.
Very amazing.
You put them on tumble cycle though.
I'll have to look into that.
Make sure it's on tumble.
Tumble.
Tumble cycle.
Yeah, bring me some of those, I'd try them.
What was the one I didn't like? There was one you made, I don't think, doesn't work.
I don't know, I did so many.
I think it was the ice cream.
You didn't care for the ice cream?
No.
Oh, that's good. Ice cream sandwiches are good.
Or maybe it was watermelon.
I don't know which one it was.
You do bacon, then I'll be serious about it.
Did you hear they put jokes on, on the back of bacon packages now? I read one that said, "One serving, two slices."
Yeah, that's...
That's not a good joke.
Funny.
Not funny. I was going through the cafeteria line at college, and I saw this.
Oops, got him started.
Dark cherry, black cherry Jello, couldn't wait, ran right. It was beet Jello.
Oh boy.
Oh. Don't make me start believing you.
No.
I don't know. That's the worst trick I've ever played, I have to give it to you.
Christmas, I'm buying you a book. A new one. Maybe your church can join in, get him a joke book.
Oh no, I just don't love tell jokes.
Are they better on Sunday morning? They should be spirit led. They should be spirit led on Sunday mornings.
Last thing going on, the little trick now is, use text.
Are we gonna hit it? Counting down?
Wait till it must have been.
Twenty-five seconds to count.
The other thing I'm interested in too, you ever had caramel apple suckers?
No.
It's caramel, it's an apple sucker covered in...
You know that...
Okay, we're gonna call this meeting in order if we can stand for a couple of minutes.
But we're to the way of the United States of America, in due republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have, from the county park district, Chris Molly here tonight. Welcome.
Well, thank you. I appreciate council giving me a few minutes of your time. I know you're busy. I'm here tonight to present you with a check for $4,550 for, uh...
You can come to every meeting. I really appreciate that and...
You stole my thunder. I'm here to thank you. I really do appreciate the village taking part in the program. You know, it's great to see a municipality invest in its parks, and we appreciate what you're doing to help promote recreation, so thank you so much for that.
Yo, you're welcome. Um, just to kind of give you an update, we will put that on there, so that, that, um, Cozy Cocoon is what you guys ended up purchasing for. So when I first saw it, I thought, "What is this thing?" And from what I understand, they're very, very, um, popular, and they help children with like autism and stuff like that, and absolutely love it. So what we've done, we've got some new park, we're actually where all the, our baseball fields and stuff are, we're investing in that park, in that area right now, and that's where this is gonna go. We got some new park equipment coming in, it's gonna go right in there with that, so.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Kristen, you so much. We really appreciate all you guys' support and all you guys' um, all you guys' help. From year to year, you guys, uh, help us out with our parks.
Not a problem.
Much appreciated.
I also brought, you know, a couple of years ago, I changed the program up a little bit, and we provide a sign now, rather than trying to get one of those crazy big plastic ones that don't fit. This one's pretty straightforward and simple, makes it easier, and I brought the copy of the grant application for the next round of funding, hoping that you'd consider participating.
Spoilings. Thank you so much, we certainly will.
And I know you've got a lot to get to tonight, but I just figured I'd ask if there's any questions you have for the park district, or anything that I might be able to answer for you.
Um, I don't think at this time. Uh, this is, but this program right here, Chris, is the one where you got on three different levels, correct? You got the big, the medium, the small.
Yeah, and we have it where it's reviewed, uh, we bring in, uh, park professionals from outside the county, so it's not anyone on staff making the decision. We bring in the director of Hancock County, we bring in somebody from Erie Metro Parks, we also bring in somebody from Sandusky County Parks. Folks that have been in the profession a long time and have a lot of experience, and they help score and rank everything, so, uh, it really goes a long way.
Well, thank you very much.
Josh, as long as he's here, do you have any questions, 'cause he works at the parks?
I think it's covered.
If you do, don't hesitate to reach out. We're glad to help wherever we can.
Thank you.
Could we take a picture real quick?
Of course, I'll come around there, of course.
Have to make the plan.
Hey, I'm gonna hold this up.
The chat?
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect. Got it.
Thanks, thank you.
Really do appreciate it. I'll let you get to it.
You also, thank you.
Have a great night, everybody.
You too, yours.
Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on to public safety. Um, Dave, did you have anything that you wanted to share?
I want to let everybody know that we did get, uh, both grants, the federal and the state for the body armor. They were both approved, um...
That's a praise.
Yes. We're going to go through and do a little cleanup on it now, and then, uh, hopefully, if we come back, we do a grand total. Where we're at now is thirty-five, six thirty-eight, ninety-five. Um, the state of Ohio took up seventy-five percent, which was twenty-six thousand, seven twenty-nine. The federal grant paid five thousand, seven hundred, forty-one, twenty-two, which at this moment has the village cost at three thousand, one hundred, sixty-eight, fifty-two. For that number of that sixteen officers, and for interchangeable. Um, so that's where we stay with that. We'll be cleaning it up, and then of course, we pull from there. Car one oh three did finally give away while I was on vacation. We took it to LaRiche, it was completely fixed. They tore the whole motor part, fixed it at no cost to us. It was under warranty, so the car is back in order.
Good job, and I just want to say, I'm very disappointed. We had taken that to Kelly's, and Kelly said it was gonna be, how much to fix it?
Uh, just shy of nine thousand.
Nine thousand dollars, and it was still under warranty. They was not gonna fix it, they weren't honoring our warranty. So we took it, when he got, I asked him to take it down and get an estimate, so he took it to, um, uh...
Jay, P. Otto, and Bowling Green.
And then that's the gentleman that said, "Hey, this thing's, you don't want me fixing it, this thing's still under warranty," correct?
Yep.
So he came back, Dave came back to me, I said, "Take that thing over to LaRiche, they're very, um, I've always had, it's just a matter of getting in with them, um, is usually the problem." And Dave did, and I'm very disappointed in, in what we was told down there, down at CB Kelly's, and, and that's just unfortunate.
He had stated to us that it didn't go by mileage anymore, it was by hours.
And that was their mechanic, so...
And then he didn't even give me an estimate that was like, in format from the computer, it was all handwritten, um, so, and stapled it and gave it to me, and... So I took it to J and T, and J and T said that we are, you know, not gonna touch it, it's gonna ruin your warranty. And I said, "Well, I was told it's not under warranty," and he said, "You know, I've called GMC and their, their motors, and they're, you're covered. You need to take this to a dealer."
Yep.
So you might check the other one. This is fresh out of the box. I mean, within the past week, that, that, definitely there's a recall of those engines.
They, they completely rebuilt it. Um, like I said, we took it to them, and it wouldn't throw a code, it just every once in a while, it started making all kinds of noise, and then it would stop. And so we took it to LaRiche, and LaRiche says, "We don't see a code, we're not hearing or seeing anything, you're just gonna have to drive it till it does it again and bring it to us." Well, of course, it happened during the middle of the night, you know, the thing that cost us was for a tow. Well, we had it towed there, and they, it was already coking out then, so it was done, so they rebuilt the whole engine, cam and everything.
It's good to go.
Good to go, it's zero loss.
Wonderful, thank you, Dave.
All right, thank you.
I got a couple of things for Dave that nobody else does, all for public safety. Um, we got an estimate on, uh, we got the glass up over there, the wall over there. Um, obviously, the door over there needs to be replaced, it's like paper thin. Um, talked to Dave about this, we got a quote from Speaker, the same people that did it, for thirteen thousand, seven forty-seven for the door and for reinforcing that back wall, uh, putting new drywall up on it, also reinforcing it. Um, Dave said he's not ready to move forward with that this year. I think we're ready, 'cause we don't got that in the budget.
No, I want a budget part.
Yeah, and I was, so, just bringing that to your, the legislative authorities' attention, that that's something we should be looking for to next year. Dave, please make sure that gets in the budget, um, for 2026. And then again, we got Better Communications gave us a quote, have we talked about this at all? About, uh, we've talked about it a lot in the past, where they've got some dead zones out there where they're not getting our... Dave, why, why don't we just put repeaters in the car?
We had them in the cars.
And then we traded the cars in and left the repeaters in there, correct?
No, I think they took them out a long time ago, they just, they weren't, they weren't getting it. I've never, my experience with repeaters weren't that great. Um, they talked about putting them on the water towers and never did.
Thought that's what this was.
That's gonna be pointed on the water tower. Um, that's what they can do.
So they got a quote, uh, for licensing and for repeaters on the water towers that, and that's twenty thousand, six seventy, that's gonna have to probably get budgeted, right? Problem is, our officers, and they've been dealing with it for a lot of years, there's areas within the town that they can't get out, and that's a problem. I didn't, I always thought this problem had been resolved. I can just tell you in the past, when his predecessor came in and said it was an issue, I think we almost wrote and gave him an open fix-it, open checkbook, to fix it. I don't know exactly what he did to fix it, I don't even remember the cost, but it was supposed to have been fixed. I didn't even know it wasn't, it was, wasn't still an issue until this year.
Um, Mayor.
When Dave brought it to my attention. Yes, sir.
When I was on last time, this was, this was also dealt with then, and it was clear that they had gone to towers, however, your predecessor didn't, didn't do anything with it. But, but it was, we had, we had come to the conclusion, the only way to fix it was the towers, back, back the last time you and I, we were both on.
So, the cost is gonna be about twenty thousand, six seventy at this time. Now, that's not just for the repeaters, it's for all the licensing that goes with it or whatever. But Dave, I thought there was some licensing that we was paying for that we were not supposed to be paying for.
Yeah, they said that we're paying for one of the fires.
We need to, we need to get that cleared up before we move forward with anything, so that's something I'm just bringing to your guys' attention, that look forward in 2026, 'cause we have to do that. If not before, I mean, we're only in May. I, I hate to put it off, right, because...
Are the ambulances and fire trucks, are their communication fine?
We're on marks.
Oh, okay, so you're on...
So you guys will never have that problem?
No, and that's possibly having repeaters. Yeah, we have repeaters in the truck.
Well, because you guys have, excuse me for breaking...
Please.
Because you guys have experience with this, do you see another way to help his department?
I was just talking about it, we're gonna sit down and talk. I just told him he should go with marks. Keep his share channel radio and his car switched to marks, and it costs me five dollars a month.
Five dollars a month, that'd cost you fifty thousand to get started.
No, the, uh, I just bought a new, I bought a dual control head radio, and it cost me three grand. So you're probably looking at fifteen hundred dollars affordable.
It's better than twenty thousand.
Yes, sir.
We'll see, I mean, I...
Yeah, there's options, I would...
Well, we just need to make sure that we make the right decision that's gonna be beneficial and that we don't... Guys, we've been addressing this for, Dave, and, and this isn't a criticism, but in your department, I know it wasn't your department at the time, we're still talking about it ten years later.
No, I remember.
I mean, that's gotta stop.
I remember exactly, 'cause I came to council, and they basically opened the checkbook and said, "Take whatever you..."
I remember that.
And I took it to Al, and alls Al did was buy us new portables.
So there, so there's the problem. So what I said, I don't, I didn't remember what...
When you guys switched it, did you do it at one point?
Yeah, he did, that was the second go around. The first go around, he just bought and saw portable radios saying it was the radio, and it wasn't.
But listen, this, 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 this is not how this village, this village is gonna run anymore. Where, where, I mean, we're, we see a problem, we're gonna fix a problem. Okay, there's been a problem, so please, let us know what we gotta do to fix it. Whether you get with this, our, our other safety departments and figure something out, or if we go with Bender. But we need to know what's gonna fix this, so we're not addressing it ever again. Please, thank you, Dave, appreciate that.
Can the backup be set for me on the door and the wall? Okay, the thirteen thousand, correct. Is there another place we can get, or two that we can get bids from?
Well, that's what we did last time, when they came in the lowest, and they did some phenomenal work over there, so I'm not sure if they wanna, I mean, yeah, we could.
They actually did phenomenal work, they gotta done fast.
They gotta done fast, and they were, they were great over there. I mean, I was over there talking to them.
And I'm sure the cost is because it's a bulletproof door.
It's a, yeah, and it's buzz in and, yeah, the...
What about the walls? Will those have something?
It will have, it will have the same reinforcing that the other walls does.
Right.
It, it's always so high, right? Like, it's not all the way to the ceiling. If somebody shoots a gun towards the ceiling, hey, I hit, I bless, you're on the roof. Which I hope you're not up there, if somebody's shooting, I hope you're shooting back at them, but I'm sorry, um... Yeah, the, the door, the bulletproof door is six thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. The, the, um, the drywall's fifteen hundred, 'cause it's bulletproof drywall level three, and then the drywall paint is two hundred dollars, and then whatever the labor is. Ten percent overhead, just in case, it's more of a contingency. So it's nine thousand. Electric work for the button, we've got to be electric work done, so...
That doesn't seem out of line when you're looking at all of that, so...
Yeah, and it makes them really, really safe over there, so...
I just had a metal door installed in my work, and not bulletproof or anything like that, and it was eight thousand.
Oh, wow. So that's a good comparison. Thank you, thank you, Tim. That's all that I think I have for safety, if nobody else.
All right, was there anything, Phil or Hunter, that you wanted to... All right, any other questions for one? All right, then we'll move on. Um, I do want to back up.
Yeah, I just want to back up, I'm sorry. Um, Phil, myself, and, um, uh, Matt, thank you, Matt, um, went over and addressed, um... Evil Bill about paying us the remaining balance, and they said they would let us know. It is forty-nine thousand dollars that's still in us. Um, bringing that to your attention. I've been to two meetings, um, I know, I know that the chief has been to at least two, and he's working on it, and Matt's been working on it, so just keeping you guys in the loop, so we'll see where we're at on that. And I did read today our mutual aid agreement, I got it in on the desk, so we will be addressing that, I hope, if, well, we'll see, I don't know.
Um, I do want to back up and say that Paula did let me know that she would not be here tonight, so, um, Public Works.
Yep, we got our bucket truck finally, last Thursday.
Dang.
Okay.
Nice truck. Um, also, I, I got an estimate for some sidewalk repairs to be done, and how'd you want to do this? Did you want to elaborate on this, Mayor?
So, um, we put, we put ten thousand dollars in the, in the budget to do sidewalk repairs this year. Um, Josh identified, I think Josh and I talked about, we got something around about that needs to be done, it's all busted up. Got some complaints from the citizens, this, one was a ninety-year-old, I think I shared with you guys, um, about the whistle stop. Nobody can go to the, you gotta step up on the high curb. We got our, we got all of our curb cuts down at the alley for our, for our...
ADA.
Yeah, ADA. We want to put one in front, right in front of the whistle stop. That way, we got one at that end, and we got one, there's a lot of people going to the salon there, and going to the whistle stop, elderly people. And a ninety-three-year-old lady say, "I, I'm sick of trying to step up on that curb, it's not safe for me." And I said, "Well, we're gonna address it," so, I said, "I'll share that with council." So that's gonna, so the part of the quote is to remove that sidewalk and come back in and put ADA accessible there. It's not gonna be handicapped there, but it's for people that park downtown. So we got a bunch of handicap parking spots down on Main Street. We, we can't have all of our parking spots handicapped, or else our regular citizens aren't gonna have the one to park. So, that, that'll at least be there for them, that they don't have to step up on the high curb. There is a handicap parking spot directly across the road in the parking lot, so they may have to walk across, but they don't have to step up on that high curb. Plus, if there's somebody in a wheelchair or a walker or anything that wants to go in there, go get their hair done, or go into the, the, um, whistle stop, it's easier access. That's, so it's the roundabout, there's busted up sidewalk out there, the whistle stop, and the whistle stop's closed on Monday. So talking to the guy who gave us this estimate, um, he said they, they may be able, depending on the weather, come in here and get that all ripped out and poured all on Monday. Said it'll be accessible Tuesday. I mean, that's a tall order, but I know...
The hair salon's also closed on Monday also.
What is the hair salon? So that would work perfect, so he's hoping, if not, it should be in there to be able to pour it early Tuesday. That's what he's telling me, they're the professionals. Um, I know that we, I poured a lot of concrete in the last couple of weeks, and, I mean, uh, better alone how high it is, um, depends on when you can walk on it. Um, so if they can get it overnight, it'll be good the next day, as long as they spray, cure it. Hey, I said, that's what, and then if anybody is driven down Cherry Street and looked at the sidewalk, it's on about a forty-five degree slope, it's not safe for anybody. Mr. Engard, I know you and I have talked about it, there's a hundred and some feet there that needs to be replaced. It's like this, it's not safe in the winter, it's not safe for people to walk on it. That's part of the project. Um, what was that quote?
Total.
To do all three of them.
Seventeen thousand for all three of them.
Seventeen thousand to do all three of them. Um, Jase Grossman sent me a quote, um, said that they, 'cause I, we asked to break that down, right? Break it down into, um, projects, right? Um, for the whistle stop curb ramp, it would be six thousand, if we wasn't gonna do them all at the same time. No, excuse me, it looks like five thousand, it's like fifty-one hundred dollars just short of, fifty-one hundred. The sidewalk at the roundabout would be thirty-four hundred, no, thirty-six sixty-two, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble seeing this. Thirty-six sixty-two for the roundabout, and then for the hundred and some feet, it looks like five hundred and eighty square foot. Uh, it's eighty-nine hundred dollars, and that's for the sidewalk down there. Does that sound unreasonable?
On Cherry, is that west or east on the...
What do you think, Dave? I don't know what concrete's going for today.
Depending on what you get, it's right around two hundred dollars a yard.
Yeah, so...
But, I mean, do you even have ten yards of concrete there?
I don't know.
That hundred, that hundred feet, that's only right around seven and a half yards, half four foot.
Yes, it's four, four foot wide, four, four inch, four inch depth.
Four inch depth, yeah. It's right around seven and a half.
Yeah.
And then the new ADA pad...
I got square footage, I don't have the...
Right.
I don't have the cubic.
Do you have the total square footage of the entire project?
It's five, uh...
And that's...
That's excavating and everything.
And that'd be the roundabout and the ADA out.
What, what would it be, uh...
This is if they do it all different, seventeen, six thirty, if they, if they do them all in different phases, 'cause they have to mow in and mow out.
Right.
Um, if, if, uh, if they do it all in one shot, it's seventeen thousand. The square footage total looks like two-ten, one-twenty, and five-eighty, square footage. So you need to take that by point three-six, divide it by twenty-seven, I'm pretty sure.
It's over nine hundred.
I don't, is that...
Yeah, it's nine hundred and ten.
Square, square feet?
Square feet.
What's the cubic yardage, though?
It'd be about, about twelve yards of concrete, about twenty-four hundred dollars for the concrete.
About twenty-four hundred dollars.
And you can see they're, they're, they're charging fourteen dollars and sixty-five cents a square foot to put in the ADA ramp, curb, gutter.
Is that to rip it out or to put it in?
That's just to put it in. They want nine dollars and fifty cents to rip it out.
Okay.
And then the other sidewalks are pretty close in line for what they're charging.
So just the, the whistle stop is where it looks like it's, and maybe it's because it's...
Yeah, I mean, the, the majority of the, of the money for the estimate is, is there. I mean, you got your, your topsoil seeding and mulching, which you don't have to do on Main Street, but you'll have to do out at the roundabout.
And you have to do down on the, on Cherry Street.
Down on Cherry Street.
So I don't know if it's...
It seems a little high, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
I, it's...
I don't pay for the concrete that I pour. Yes, my neighbor does, so I don't know.
Right, I mean, whatever I do, I just say, "Hey, this needs to be done," and it gets done, and I don't really have money, you know what I mean? So, but it seems fair, as long as they're taking everything, cleaning everything up, and it's just gonna be brand new and ready to go.
What's the cost, is there cost savings if we take the side, not, not like the whistle stop, but we take the sidewalks out at the roundabout and down on Cherry Street?
So we want to get into that?
We got a many, we got dumb trucks. I mean, if it's gonna save three or four thousand dollars, I, I don't know if it is or isn't, I don't know what that cost is.
If something, Josh, you have to reach out and find out, but this is...
No, I, I don't, I don't think it's a bad deal, especially if they're, if they're taking it all out of town and they're cleaning it up, then...
Oh yeah, we don't do nothing.
Yeah, so you have trucks and all that stuff tied into those square foot prices.
I mean, what do you guys think? I mean, this is something, gives a thought to it, we'll take action, we'll bring it to your attention on Tuesday.
Right.
For action.
These all tie into safety for our citizens, especially that Cherry Street and then the...
The whistle stop.
Whistle stop, yeah.
Well, we still gotta make sure that we're getting the best deal, right? Um, I think we're just trying to get somebody in and get these things taken care of. Next year, we'll be getting more quotes, um, getting it out as well.
So is the damage at the roundabout due to some lines running over the...
Yep.
Is there anything we can do about that?
We get state, we know.
We can't put any like the round...
We can't do really nothing out there.
'Cause they take our signs out and everything, so I didn't...
So the state puts those back.
Oh, I thought we...
And we get money for, like, the state, the money that we pay for that roundabout's coming out of the state money.
Oh, okay.
We've got a fund for the, the state pays us.
I thought we had to maintain it, and we paid for the repairs.
We pay for lighting up there.
Just, okay.
They, we do pay for it, but they give us, they give us an allowance every year. I don't know what it is, I got it at the office.
Okay.
You, if anybody's got a fund balance sheet, it's on there. You got one, Tim?
I think the balance was up to...
Seventy-seven thousand.
Seventy-seven thousand.
But we, we use some of that for the, we use some of that for the bucket truck, the pitch lights out there, and I don't know how much.
I don't even know if it was a third.
So, but, but that money means, uh, we use some of it for salt, I believe. Some of it should come out of it for the salt, I'm almost positive we've talked about. Because you said we saw it out there sometimes.
Yes.
So if we have to go out there and hit it real quick, so the, you know, twenty thousand dollars of salt this year, I think we're gonna be spending somewhere around that, so it's gonna come out of that. And then obviously, any repairs that we might do out there will come out of that fund.
Okay.
So just give some consideration, uh, it'll be brought back before you, on Tuesday, um, for action, um, if, if it's something we want to do this year. Uh, but, uh, we gotta do something with those sidewalks, we gotta do something. Well, Josh first initially came to me about the roundabout. I said, "Well, you know," and he was just gonna have him come in and do the roundabout, right? And he was like, "We can't, we can't justify bringing our equipment for, you know, just..."
That's small of the gap.
Yeah, if you guys can come up with anything else you want done, and we let him know, "Hey, next year, um, uh, you know, we're gonna have a lot of sidewalk work the next few years." We will be getting quotes, we'll be getting, you know, um...
Yep. These are the guys, to answer your question, Bill, these are the same guys that did the sidewalk repairs for, that was the end result of the sewer separation. Just the stuff over the last couple of years, and they do a great job.
Okay. Josh's.
So, I have a question on the bucket truck.
Yep.
Do we need a shelter ASAP for that vehicle?
Uh, it's, it's in Brian's barn. Something of ours is going to have to come out, has came out, but it'll, it'll do a lot less harm on whatever comes out than it will the bucket truck sitting out in it. That's why we don't have the bucket truck we had. This one's not gonna set out.
Okay. Well, whatever we can do, you know, I know we keep working at night, I know everybody is, especially Josh Bender's been really...
I know everybody is, especially Josh Bender's been really hard on our, that building project.
Hard on it doing what? We've named it in for fifteen years, so we ain't working that hard on it, because we still don't have it.
Well, we need to get it done.
Do you got three hundred thousand dollars?
I don't.
I mean, what was the, do we get, do we ever even get an estimate on what it costs to put that up?
We've had, we've had a couple last estimates.
What's it seem that it's gonna be?
Um, it, it's, it seemed like it was right around three hundred thousand.
To get what we need, right?
Yes.
Um, Brian, didn't you say something about? And I wanna put you on the spot, I can't remember if you and I was talking about it. Um, maybe using the tone property for, for maybe something for the village, if we buy that off you? You don't use it for anything, do you? You never, if the village bought that off you, for whatever we'd have to, maybe start looking at, I mean, if we're gonna fix it, why wouldn't we look at maybe doing a south side, um, safety building? Um, I think Ted said that, and I'm getting off, you know, I'm not going back to safety, but, you know, with, you know, putting EMS out there, chief wanted to, maybe something that would, I talked to Jimmy about it the other day when I was up here looking at that truck, and good job on that truck, by the way. Um, and then having, you know, having it big enough for maybe our, you know, our garage and some offices for our, our, our public works, you know? You know, won't they, if you build more big ones, it could be less than building two or three smaller ones, I mean, that's just a fact of the matter. That's something we need, you know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna really attack something, let's attack something with some.
Does that property buy the rest of ours?
Yeah, I'll provide the rest of ours.
Obviously, we have to talk to Mr. Roberts, and then talk to the department heads to see if they were even interested in doing something like that, um, and then seeing if Josh, you know what Josh thought about. You know, and then start getting some figures on, I mean, we wanna put showers in, I mean, we wanna do it right. You know, we're, we're, because I asked Hooker about, you know, hey, do we even have people that can staff? Yeah, we could, you know, so if we had one that was on the south side, we got people on the south side of town that would go and get in that truck and make first responders, so the rest could get out there, so. You know, that's, that's something I think we should be kinda trying to focus on, if we're gonna do something. I mean, you would, would you have a problem with being, you'd have your own area, are you in that?
I wouldn't have a problem at all, absolutely not.
Um, I do know that the, um, that the, um, township guys came to me at the economic development dinner and asked if we were interested in their building, but they haven't said when, you know, when, when they made, they went out on Eagle, or, uh, Cory Road, thank you. But there wasn't a show on exactly when they were gonna be out of there, right? So, I mean, there could be some potential things in the works, um. Because it's one of those things, Bill, I appreciate what you're saying, but, I mean, we have, we're not working on it that hard, because it's like ten, twelve years in the making. I mean, how long have they been in your building?
The school department been there, since a, a pounder burned down.
Yeah, they were there before I started, which is thirty years ago.
Then it just got them so convenient that we just kinda said, you know what, deal with the guys, and that ain't fair to Brian, and it's certainly not fair to Josh. So, you know, um, just.
Well, because the, the dollar amount, three hundred thousand, okay, well, is there grant money out there? You know, is there money out there to get this stuff? I don't know.
That's why I'm talking about putting safety services in with them. So, yeah.
Give it design and get, you know.
Bingo, that, you got it.
And then, then you can go after.
That's right. You don't go for a grant and then tell them what you want, you tell them what, you know what I mean? You have everything ready to go, and then you go and say, okay, this is, right? The, the, I think everybody started to be impressed with, and that's what stinks about grants, right? You gotta pay for the engineering to get qualified for most grants. And your engineers are gonna cost you an arm and a leg, and then you gotta put her on the shelf until the grants are tough, that you might qualify, but that's the way it works, it doesn't work like.
You have to load it in by fifty, sixty thousand, probably just in, in engineering.
Right. Yeah, so I don't know what we can.
Well, Tony was, Tony spoke of this deal about the port authority, you remember that one?
Oh, boy.
Where you forego, yeah, you love this. You don't have to pay the union wage. The prevailing wage.
Prevalent wage.
Would save us a whole lot of money. I don't know if that still stands, it's been two years ago since I've heard about it.
We have to read job directs, I didn't talk, don't talk that. Yeah, yeah, it's once you get over the seventy-five thousand dollar threshold, you gotta pick.
Well, there's extra hoops we have to jump through because of who we are, too. We can't do like an X, Y, Z company and, oh, Jay Steele's got buildings on sale. We can't do that.
So that's just thoughts on that.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions for Josh? All right, we're going to move on to public utilities, Mike?
Brian?
Um, I believe the equipment's on there and.
That's two.
Okay, uh, so started with the equipment, uh, I don't know if Josh Bender gave you guys a.
It's up there.
Okay.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it should be like a check-off list, that's kind of where we started with. Um, to, if you guys were going to allow us to use the equipment on our personal properties, um, we would start with, you know, basically the check-off list goes through there. Um, and that's kind of what we've come up with so far. I don't know if, if, you know, if, if that's good enough, or we need additional policies written up for it or not. Um, but I know we spoke about it a couple of months ago, and so Josh and I got together and kinda came up with, uh, what we thought would cover the situation if somebody wanted to use a piece of equipment.
So what needs to be done, Mr. Roberts, to qualify somebody to be able to borrow that equipment?
Uh, be a full-time employee. Um, other than that, uh, depending on the piece of equipment, are they trained to use that piece of equipment? Can they, if they say they have been, can they come out, use a piece of equipment in front of Josh or myself and demonstrate the ability to use the equipment, not just say, yeah, we can run it? Um, if they were to use a dump truck, all of our dump trucks require a Class B CDL, uh, so they would be required, you have a class, at least a Class B CDL, uh, to be able to use the dump truck, um, if they needed to haul stone or dirt or whatever they were going to be using it for. Um, it is on your personal property only, so I can't just say, hey, I'm gonna borrow it, my neighbor needs some work done and use it on his property, that's for our personal properties only. Um, you know, say a sidewalk needs replaced, and, you know, instead of paying somebody to come in and pull a sidewalk out, I can take the mini down there, pull a sidewalk out, load the stuff in a dump truck, take it over to Finley and refuel everything when I'm done, showing a receipt, showing that I filled the equipment backup, turn that receipt back in.
Is the equipment really full before the employee takes it?
Yes, I believe that there's a check, a thing on there saying, asking if the equipment was full. We'll, we'll make sure that is full, um, and then a receipt would be required, so they can't just say, okay, yeah, ting, 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 yeah, we filled it up, well, yeah, you did on our money, not your own, you know what I mean? So they, if, if they're borrowing a piece of equipment, they would have to take it out to, you know, fuel bar or whatever, it's diesel, fill it up, bring the receipt in, turn the receipt in, showing that they re, that it was back or full when they.
Brian, what does it mean, failure to do so may result in the employee being held responsible for damages?
So that would be i, if, so when, say, Josh wanted to borrow our backup, and.
Josh Law.
Yep, and we know the footsteps are already bent, we know that. But we need to take pictures of that, identify anything that they see that is wrong with it. So we check off this, what was wrong with it before you took it. So say, for example, I wanna use their backup. We already know the hydraulic cylinders are leaking, so it wasn't something I caused, they're already leaking, we just haven't gone to fix yet. Um, but so, so that.
So it says, are there visible signs of damage, it said, I would say yes.
Correct. And then you'd have to document that damage.
Why document that?
Uh, be pictures, and then we would just create a file, um, a, a file to put that information in there.
Do you have any room on this to maybe put a couple of lines in under there?
Yeah, that, those, that's just like the beginning, so that's for you guys to look out, add, add anything to.
I would like to see pictures with, yes, steps were bent, yes, windshield was cracked, yes, there was a leak in the hydraulic line or anything, that way it's.
I think signatures too, I think your department head.
I believe there's.
Well, what do you do about insurance, and how, what, does that fall under?
Our employees are insured.
Take care of that, I mean, you know, the insurance, what about safety harnesses and things like that? Because I know from experience.
What, what, what piece of equipment are they borrowing? You don't need a safety harness or a backup, because, or a mini or a dump truck. So the only thing that would require a safety harness would be the bucket truck. And not every employee is trained in using the bucket truck. I believe I'm the only one on the water department side that has ever been trained on, on using the bucket truck. So there would be something, there would be, so if, if Matthew Smith wanted to borrow the bucket truck, well, he hasn't been properly trained, can we properly train him for it? Yes, we can.
And document?
And document that he was trained on.
There's also, I don't see anything on here, unless I'm overlooking it, that what about someone else writing in there? A family member or a child or something like that? See, that, that, I'll be honest, I have great concerns over this, just because I know from personal experience that all rules don't get followed when equipment comes home. So I, I have concerns, I'll, I'll just be honest with you.
No, and that's fine, because, and, and we probably need to add, if, if any of these rule, and, and that's why I'm saying that this is like a starting point, so we can continue to make that a living document, make it grow, come up with areas that need addressed. Uh, no, no other employee, no non-employees live in vehicles. Somebody gets caught, they lose, lose their privileges, period, they're done. They never get to use another piece of equipment again. I mean, that, that's how I would see it, uh, so, you know, that would just be.
My concern is, is the one that breaks the rules and someone gets hurt, and then it doesn't matter that they don't get to use it again, we've got someone that could have gotten hurt, and now we're responsible with our insurance, you know what I'm saying?
This document would have to be a liability waiver.
There you go, there's the answer right there.
Has it went to, has it went to the board yet?
No, I don't think, I don't know, he, Josh hasn't, I don't know, I haven't been.
Not, not, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
Right.
I think the lawyer can come up with a plan for it.
And I like when he's signing off, that says, hey, the village will be held harmless of any.
Yeah, and all, all this has to say is by signing this document, you're agreeing this.
That's exactly right, making sure that that's.
Any damage caused by.
I guess I want, I want the lawyers to tell us, and if that's gonna protect us.
I think that's what we're saying.
You know, I think every cost of repair.
I like the idea, the legal can, can sign off on it, I like the idea that this is a benefit, that we keep good people here. Because we don't always have enough money to offer what other places do, but we can offer some things on the side, but also, at the same time, we have to do what Dee is saying, we gotta protect the village at all costs.
And we do that, like, right? We gotta, we gotta, uh, you know, this, the, um, you know, we gotta sign up for Snow Hill, right? We got, you gotta come up and sign a document if you're gonna want to get any wood, right? That you only don't harm us, there's, I know there's one more that you have to sign, I'm almost positive.
Is there a way that they?
That's for the, uh, like if you're having, uh, you wanna close the streets or whatever, they, they.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Or whatever they had.
I wonder if there's a way that they can, um, add it on to their insurance for the use of it or something? I don't know if that's even possible.
Well, I know if you rent a piece of equipment.
Right.
Typically, i, if you get in an accident, they're going after your insurance company. They're, they're not, their insurance, their insurance company will go after your insurance company.
The difference is, they're not renting it.
Correct.
And this document's about four pages long, what theirs is.
Correct.
You know what I mean?
Correct.
There's all kinds of language in there, making sure that there's, nothing can come back from it.
Right, I think that's what we need, is something from our attorney drawn up that protects the village.
Well, I don't know that we need to get our attorney involved in creating a document when, if the documents already exist, all we have to do is go, say, what do you do? Go over and see what's involved, and we just use what's involved, to spend a thousand dollars for, or three hundred or five hundred dollars for somebody to, to create something that we can just, what do they call it? Paste in copies, paste, I mean, what do they call that stuff? You know, why would we not do that?
No, I, I do believe that it is documented, we can put it in there. They just have to make sure that the, the proper language is in there, that's all. If you wanna get together with me, Brian, we can do that.
Yeah, that's awesome.
We can do that.
I, I would think.
I, I'm in favor, I just think that we need to protect.
And I agree a hundred percent, a hundred percent.
That can't come back, correct.
And I think it has to say in there that this is for private property only, not your name, you know, somehow get that, because I think.
I think the beginning of it said.
And it, that's a really good point, because you can't be using village to go out and do side jobs.
Correct.
Right, I mean, that's, that can't, you can't, you make a money off, you know, it's gotta be your own personal project, your own personal.
Yeah, because the rule, the rules, the rules are made for people that might violate.
Are you going to be supervising over this to make sure that that's exactly what?
When somebody borrows piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Am I gonna drive and see who's?
Well, are you gonna make sure that it's, that it's being used where they say it's being used on there?
Police it, and it does say that, that we get what the department had before it leaves and when it comes back.
Yeah, before it leaves and when it comes back. And I find out and make sure Matthew Smith uses it at his, his house. If he gets caught somewhere else, because somebody else sees him.
That's exactly right.
I mean, I, I'm not gonna spend my weekend chasing somebody around to see if they're using it on their own property, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I mean, you, you have to, you have to, in my opinion, you had, would have to have some, a little bit of common faith in your employees saying, if we're using it on our property, that's where they're at.
Our employees aren't bad employees out trying to do foolish things.
No.
Like, right, like, but.
But that's, that's just the beginning, I just wanted to bring backups a weekend.
I want it in there, if they get caught doing anything or violating, they will never use it again, that's, that means never use it again.
Correct.
That, that means not even subject to Aaron or Josh Bender or Brian Roberts or Josh Law. If they are found violating any of this, they're not, we're not gonna let people ruin a, a benefit for somebody else. If anybody's caught, if they don't bring it back full of fuel, they're done. If they're, if they're caught using it, trying to do side work, they're done, right? If they're doing, it, it needs to be where they're, and I think it needs to be on here, where are they gonna use that piece of equipment?
I believe it, it is, it should be there.
I didn't see it.
Equipment to be used, purpose of use.
Says address where the equipment will be used.
Okay, I'm sorry, Dan, I didn't see that, I was.
Oh, yeah, there's some.
So that's kind of the stuff, I just don't wanna see somebody violate. It's, you know, it's, it's a serious issue, and it'd be a great benefit for you guys to be able to use. But I will tell you, it was really nice last weekend, two weekends ago, being able to use the dump truck or the backhoe, thank you very much, to help out with the garden down there, right? We'd have never got it done without that backhoe, so I wanna thank you guys. Thank you, Brian, for letting us use your backhoe, I got a part of that right spot, didn't I?
Nobody complains, so it must be.
Doesn't mean you get to drive the cop car.
Come on, give me, give me one shot.
Okay, so that's just a starting point, if you guys can make notes, get those back to Josh.
Can you get with Dave?
Yeah, it's.
You got Dave, you got Sarah, I guess.
We can get together, um, anytime he wants to, uh, and, and we can continue to move forward and.
Perfect.
I just don't wanna spend a lot of time doing something if it's not even something that we're gonna consider doing. So, you know what I mean?
It sounds like with the right language in it, that's the news, I think there's the liability, making sure that nobody's abusing it.
Okay.
Exactly, the liability, make sure nobody's abusing it, and that we're not gonna be held responsible, I think it's. I agree, Mr. Saltis, we don't pay our employees a whole lot of money if this is something we can do to give them a perk, to save them money on the backend of doing home projects.
Thank you for working on this.
Yeah, uh, next was Neptune. Uh, are we going to move forward with that Neptune three-sixty portal or not? I know last month we got together and were supposed to get together and discuss it with the committee, and nobody's ever got ahold of me to.
I think Mr. Saltis was on.
I was on vacation.
Oh, okay, okay.
Didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, okay.
Would you like to get together and meet about it?
Okay, uh.
Do you even know anything about it?
No, I don't.
Okay, all right, my bad.
Well, I don't, I think, well, let's, 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 because if we're gonna do something, we should do something next Tuesday. We all know about it, can you get with Mr. Saltis this week before next Tuesday?
Yeah, absolutely.
We're gonna move forward with it, Brian, you wanna move forward with it?
Correct, yeah.
It's a heck of a benefit for the citizens, do we have the money to move forward?
Yeah, it, it got budgeted, uh, so that entire project got budgeted between the sewer and water department for the initial setup, and then we will just have to continue to budget for the services every year after. Uh, I believe it, depending on what will we do, it's five thousand dollars a year. Uh, I believe it, depending on what will we do is five thousand dollars a year. Uh, if we do it where they can, uh, where they can actually be on that and then click on that and pay a water bill, I think that was another two thousand dollars. I don't know that we need that.
When you did the presentation?
Uh, that was when I had a.
You were here, you just may not remember it.
I I had, I, when they found out I had an infection.
Yeah.
And so I, there's a lot of stuff that's just lost.
Okay. No, that's, no, that's fine.
Uh, I just know that we discussed.
One of the two, you know. Uh, and and if we're.
That's my line.
And and that 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 has been budgeted for, uh, I think it's going to be a great asset to the to the residents. Um, i- it's not under Josh's threshold or over Josh's threshold to spend. The money was budgeted. So we want to move forward with it. We we can. I mean, I I would say that we do.
Well, one one thing I know we talked about through a round, you know, for us to invest this kind of money out of your department, Mr. Roberts, and nobody utilizes it because it's a new thing, like me, I'm I'm pretty good where I'm at.
Your wife will.
She will, she will, and I will, and I will appreciate that, you know, when I can say, oh, my goodness, we just saved what I'm getting at. We kicked her out a little bit about giving some sort of a, maybe an incentive?
An incentive, uh, we discussed maybe.
Five percent?
We did five, ten percent off of.
A monthly bill?
Off off of.
One month.
One monthly bill.
Yes.
And not if you're behind, not not if you're in the rears, but at one monthly bill, if you sign up for it, you know, so basically, you know, it might cost my department seven dollars per side per customer. But if we're not wasting water and and people's are modern in their own stuff, so we're not driving all over the place to do so.
Right.
Uh, it it saves us money and and we're in our own vehicles there.
Where am I asking you? Is that possible buy ten percent cost savings for that month is the month that I sign up for.
Correct, correct.
Because I may be one of those stubborn people saying, yeah, I think it's a great idea, but I don't. And then I say, oh, man, this is real benefit. I want to sign up for it. I'm still going to realize that ten percent.
Correct.
Correct?
Yes. So if you, you're six months from now.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
You sign up for it today.
That's what I'm asking.
Then yes.
Yes.
I I think that's something that we should consider doing and look looking at too.
So is Neptune going to monthly or provide you with new subscribers? Who who the new subscribers are?
They would have to actually come in, they would come in and and get the paperwork and and we would be able to see who's all on there. So, uh, once people start signing up, we'll be able to see who's all signed up on it.
We'll get, the system will allow you to monitor the news?
Yeah, I'm.
I mean, already you are, you already are.
Correct.
Right.
But I think, yeah, you'll be, they'll be distinguished between the Aaron that didn't sign up.
That's that's how I understand it. Yes, we'll be able to see every person that has signed up for that.
But they're logged in and made an account.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
And I'm going to have to physically sign up for that. I'm sorry I'm dragging this out, huh?
It'll be an app.
I'm so bad at this.
It'll be an app, so like iTunes app, you know, you download your music, you just download this and put in some information and then press that button and there you go.
What's what's an app? We can't take our bill.
Right now, there, I think there's three different ways you could pay your bill.
Well, I mean, and their online part of it.
Yeah, so that would be, i- if the, if we went with the online part of it, that would automatically go right into our billing software also. So that's where the the extra two thousand is because they have to basically pay their subscriber fees. So it would go right into our billing is how I understood it, what we're currently using now, and then they could pay their bill that way.
Brian, would you please get with Mr. Salters and let him know which recommendation that we're, you and Josh Bender and Mr. Salters, what you're recommending for Tuesday's meeting?
Okay.
Now, because what, we can Tuesday's meeting, and then we'll say, okay, here it is, plus the ten percent. Because that may increase me to sign up.
No, that's the holiday, that's okay.
I'm sure I asked you this before, but Eagle Land and Residence Co.
No, no, they have a master meter out front, so.
You guys are already paying more than less than we are.
Three more.
Oh, yes, you are.
West of the Indian Bill for your home. Sixty nine eighty.
Their their rates are less than the rest of the villages, if I'm correct in saying that.
I don't think they are.
Think they are. It used to be.
Seventy nine.
Yeah, I think they are. That they are. Good.
I have never paid, never paid a bill below seventy seven dollars. And that's just the two of us in the house.
I.
I haven't paid a bill in a long time under a hundred and fifty bucks ever.
Oh, be quiet.
Yeah. Mine was coming in at a hundred and seventy a month. I told my wife.
Years ago.
Oh, my word.
They read meters, there's enough charge.
That's what I was wondering about.
What charge?
I've been twice. Anyhow, I was reading.
Brian, did you have anything else?
I just have one more thing. So currently, right now, we have a a pool meter policy, um, where if somebody wants to fill their swimming pool up, we get a work order from Uptown, we got to take a meter, we got to take it to Timmy's house. Timmy gets to use it. I'm just using him as an example. He gets to use it for three days. Then after that three days is up, we get another work order to go pick up his meter because Mike might need a meter also. But then we go to Timmy's house. He's not home. The meter is not to be found. We go back to Timmy's house. We go back to Timmy's house. Maybe four or five times later, going to that address, we get the meter back to take to the next person.
Yeah, that's not good.
Okay, what I would like to do is do away with dropping off meters. Not, 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 not allowing people to fill their swimming pools. We have the technology through our meter readers to see when people's filling swimming pools. So in my opinion, if we use the same format as we use right now, if somebody wants, Tim wants to fill his pool, he simply calls Uptown, say, I'm going to be filling my pool this weekend. We say, okay. He fills his pool, we pull up his account, we see he filled up his pool. We make an adjustment to what he filled his pool and we're done. We're not going. Because right now, currently, the way we do it is we get a meter, we write down the meter reading number.
Yeah.
We pop the meter.
Then that's where you go.
Get that, get their house meter reading. Then when we're done, when we go to pick it up, if he's there or it's out, we do the same thing over again, just to calculate that he's used five thousand dollars.
And what you're getting, what they're talking about, if you guys don't notice the operation credits.
Yes, correct.
That's what it's all about.
Yes.
Which is substantial.
Correct. I mean, some place, some people save a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks, some people, but you have to use a minimum of a thousand gallons or you don't get a discount anyhow. Because it's all on sewer side. You know, you're still paying for the water, you're just not paying for the sewer. Uh.
How much does it usually take to fill up?
Depends on the size of the pool, how, if it's a new pool, if it's a a pool that was drained down three and a half foot and they got to refill it. And and it's some ranges then between five thousand and fifteen thousand.
There's no possibility of somebody saying, hey, I'd like that, and they're wasting water, right? If I don't have a pool.
That's why I'm saying that they they they, well, it could. That's why I'm saying they would still need to be held accountable, saying, they still need to call Uptown and say, I'm filling my pool.
Right.
Because we're not going to say, okay, my toilet's stuck. Well, you only, but you only get one time. It's 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 the same as a meter drop off. You only get one fill.
Yeah.
You only get to use a pool meter once the entire year. So most people do it in the spring. If they top off their pool in the summer, they don't get to use it again. It's just at that point, it was, it's a luxury item, in my opinion. And we're not going to let you continue to pull meters.
So do you need to go out there to get a meter reading to see what it is before they start and?
We do, yes, that's what we do now.
But would you do that then? I know you wouldn't give them the meter, but would you just go out and get their?
We don't have to. Our system, our system does that.
Okay.
So if they call up here, if Aaron calls up here and says, hey, I'm filling my wall, I don't get it, I, first of all, I don't get, we have to get this out to people though, Brian.
Correct. Well, th- those that are using pool meters are going to call for a pool meter anyway. So at that point, we just say, we're no longer.
What day are you going to fill it up?
Yes, and we're not dropping off meters. We're going to use our.
Use our technology.
Technology to read how much, how many gallons you use to fill your pool.
And then all we have to do if I say, okay, I'm filling my pool tomorrow, we'll know that, you know, it takes twenty four hours to fill a pool. I don't know. I don't have.
You'll clearly see it. So say, say, for example, your your household uses an average of a hundred gallons.
Yeah, you're, but you're going to see that.
Correct. And now all of a sudden, it's twelve hundred gallons that day. We know they use a thousand gallons, eleven hundred gallons, so.
So is that something we need to take action on next Tuesday or is that just something that?
I think, I think we have a policy. Do we have a policy?
There, I have to look to see what it actually says. I know back in the day.
Let's have a po- let's have a policy that does exactly what you're asking. Josh can help you right now.
Okay.
Please do that. So we've got it consistent up here so it's not.
Correct, because I I know there was a policy because that's where the thousand gallons came from. You can only use it once a year.
Those are the things that we need to know.
Yeah, and I have not read it in a while, but I know it exists.
You tell Josh what you would like to see and I'm sure he can draft it up. I don't want to put him on. I mean, he's good.
I mean, he's going to write that stuff up.
And then he'll give it to you, draft you at anything goes wrong in there. Just have it ready for Tuesday's meeting and and we'll ask them, they have authority to consider it. I think it's a great.
Oh, and it has already started. That's what I'm saying. I mean, uh, last Friday, I went to, I spent an hour and a half dropping off and picking up pool meters. Because I only had one other guy here and they were doing other stuff. So running all over the place, wasting fuel, wages to drop off meter pools when we have technology that will do it for us, why would we not?
That just took a whole lot to a fire.
On Tuesdays.
They used to let you do that until people complained because they got rust in the pool, and then that was the end of that.
They didn't appreciate it.
They didn't appreciate it. So, yeah, so that ended, yeah. Yeah, they, like, if you had a big pool, they'd put the master meter on there and they would fill it.
These are going to fire truck units.
That's what we do.
Yeah, yes.
Work.
Yes.
Working, we do work.
Right. So, no, other than that, that's all I got. Oh, well, hold on. We got, sorry, we got our spray units put in last Friday. Um, the last spray unit that went out in the fall and that we bought this year. Uh, what had happened with that was the clear well level got low and the way they had it tied up was just a cable going across. Well, it got low enough that it actually pulled the cable out of the wall, therefore allowed everything to spin. And it completely ripped the wire out of the pump. The pump was eleven years old anyhow, so we replaced it. But it tore the whole tube out, which we had because I bought last year in case we needed them. Uh, but that all got put in last Friday. Um, they ended up being here for about nine and a half hours instead of the three and a half that fell off there going to be here. But, uh, so that got taken care of. And then, uh, the CCR report, uh, has been uploaded to the website. Uh, so I'll finish up the paperwork for the EPA for that, letting them know it's been uploaded, get some copies uptown. Um, and then, uh, there should be a thing on the bill saying that you can see that on the, uh, website. Uh, and then also in the CCR report, it also, uh, says that you could see our, the village's entire lead service, not lead service, service line inventory, which is every resident and every service line in North Gomorrah, what your service line is, what we believe is going to your house. Uh, so that's all on the website also. Other than that.
If I have lead line, I have to get it replaced?
On your side? No. Uh, no, nothing to do with lead is the homeowner's responsibility. It, that all goes on to the village. Uh, which we're waiting on. No, it's just a service line, not a wow. Just let you know.
I have a service line.
Uh, you you do.
I got it.
So, uh, but we're waiting on, Cindy Brooks has put in a grant for us, uh, through the EPA. So we're waiting to hear back from them to see what kind of funding, uh, they're going to give us for replacing those, which I believe is like ninety eight total service lines. And then the village will be completely without lead service.
Which ones?
We had to identify them all.
They had to, you had to dig them up, right?
Yes, so the ones that we didn't know, we had to dig up. Other ones, you could base off of age, um, age of the home, when the, when the line was put in, whether we dug in that area or not, whether we borrowed and replaced them. Uh, so I mean, it was, it was a lot of work to get this done, uh, but.
It was required, right?
It absolutely was required and it was a deadline, uh, which was last October twenty fourth, November twenty fourth.
Pushed it on.
Correct, um, then other than that, I think I'm good.
So Brian, will you please make sure that you get with, like, Mr. Salters to see which one?
He says he's good tomorrow, so.
You'll get with, you'll get with.
Yeah.
With Mr. Richmond, figure out this thing and then get with Mr. Bender to to.
For the meters.
Yes, for that meter. And we'll get over there and take care of it in your apartment if they agree with it.
Okay.
All right, and any other questions for Brian? All right, we are going to.
Thank you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Brian. See y'all.
Up here?
Yeah.
Oh, the thing I have on here.
Unless you want me there.
No, that's fine. It can be up here. I'll get with Josh first thing in the morning to make sure he's available.
I just wanted to have to have the conversation with, uh, what I got on there is the village administrators, it's the spending. Right now, we have, I think it's fifty thousand dollars.
What the, uh, I took that victory by his coat. I could have looked it up.
Yeah.
I haven't looked it up for a while.
And we we've talked about this in the past too. And this is nothing against our village administrator, what we have now or.
And he knows that.
Yeah.
I've had to talk with him in the office.
I I just, me and the mayor's talked about this. I I think it should be lowered, you know? Just, just to protect us, right? Protect the village.
What parameters are you looking at?
Oversight.
Yeah, oversight.
Oversight. To be honest with you, there's nothing to stop him right now without that. He can buy the, and they're, he don't have a leg to stand on. He can say, everybody's code authorized me to do so. It's in the budget. I spend it. There's nothing you guys can do about that. That happened. It pretty much happened. That's what brought this whole thing up.
So what boundary you're talking?
Right.
I don't know. Um, Tim, we're talking about a seventeen thousand dollar contract right now. We're talking about, you know, maybe the Bender, what what's your thoughts, Timmy? I know we talked about it. Fifty thousand, just a little.
I I was thinking fifteen to twenty is what I, where I was at.
I would agree with that a hundred percent.
I mean, I just.
That's the thought. I, the exact number I got in mind.
Guys, the more, and I mean this with all my, the more stuff that comes before this body with transparency, that they know that is, the better for you guys. And and I'm, I've sat in those seats for sixteen years, I know. We didn't always have, guys, the reason, I don't, I'm not going to lay it on this to me, I know that I do, but I went through a lot up here that none of you guys have had to go through, which leads me to why I bring these things up, right? I mean, we're really blessed with the team that we have right now, talking about across the board. I know I've said that in a lot of meetings, but I don't think we have anything to be concerned about, in my opinion, right now, by nothing. But they all know, and I make it clear to everybody, get into the legislative authority, they will give you the authorization to do what you want. So Dave, would you agree with that, whatever?
Absolutely.
I tell, hey, I'll go to Calisur. We'll go to Calisur. Hey, that's up to Calisur, right?
Always.
Yes, and 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 I'm, so thank you, Dave. I don't mean to put you off, but.
Nope, that's how it was.
But I just, I'm a firm believer in you got to have checks and balances.
I don't think anyone on.
I know.
Disproves that of it.
No, I couldn't, I don't know how I got back up to fifty thousand.
Well, I remember.
Yeah, I remember.
That's why when I come back, when I was concerned about, oh, guys, you don't know what happened with, you know, Mr. Shaw.
Advantage, but yeah, it was.
And that's okay.
But that's okay.
I think what we need to do is, I think we need to recreate the purchasing policy, right? Because the purchasing policy is where all this was and it has to do with, there's a, there's a lot of the purchasing policy. Unfortunately, nobody's able to find the purchasing policy. I think I got an old copy of it. Looked through my old documents to see if I could find one. Um, and then maybe we just rewrite that and have you guys draft it. I don't think there's anything that we need to, this isn't real pressing, but at least it's nice to know that, you know, this body, it gives twenty thousand gives them the flexibility to do what needs to be done. And keep in mind, if there's an emergency, guys, and we, let's say that Josh Bender had to spend forty thousand dollars or something as a national emergency. We're going to a special meeting today to talk to you guys. Like, he's not just gonna spend it to just say, oh, I'm just gonna spend something like forty thousand dollars. There's something devastating to happen that we couldn't, that couldn't be prevented, right? Something that maybe in the water department that went, hey, we're, we said, oh yes, we're, I'm authorizing this contract right now. We would be calling a special meeting saying, I mean, it's bigger than, right?
We had that one.
So you guys, even if he had to go outside the perimeters of it, if he had to or Matt had to, you guys are gonna be brought in, in the loop. As long as I sit in the seat, I'm sorry.
That's right. Becky, how, what was to that? We had that ambulance just, we had to do something quick then. That's an example.
Yeah. We're trying to cancel.
Yeah.
So, uh, it's, but those things happen. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Was there anything else?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Tim?
Let me make sure I don't got nothing in here.
Um, I can bring it up now. Um, Josh Bender brought this to my attention. He's very, very displeased and in fact, he's very, very mad. Um, we've got a system that, if you guys is on council in twenty twenty-two, um, I just think you two is the only ones, um, you guys approved a Munich code system within the village? And, and it's all right if you don't remember the details. I'm not asking you guys to. It's not bring you guys to. It's for the clerk. It's to make your job so easy, almost the whole thing is a push of the button. He's done the training on it. He said, oh my gosh, this is gonna help. Yeah, yeah.
So what was brought to us?
His contract. Let me, let me have that back. I'll explain it. As much as I know, he's gonna talk to you guys about it. Um, this thing costs, we, we paid since twenty twenty-two, fourteen thousand five hundred and one dollars that, um, Tony authorized this, so I had to went through you guys and we've not used it once. We, we wasted about through the, he's finding, he's auditing, he's being our old doge feller. He's going through there and finding where we're just way throwing money out the door, right? We have not used this.
I'm just saying this is what it is.
Okay, it's, 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 it's a system. It's for the clerk position. It's supposed to help the agenda post.
Yes.
Uh, it posts minutes. It's organizes everything. It's gonna save the clerk, uh, a lot of time and confusion about what's going on. It prevents mishaps. It's got a bunch of stuff in here that this, that this system that we pay for, we paid for since twenty twenty-two, four thousand six hundred dollars one year, four thousand six hundred dollars another year. It's gone up to four, five thousand dollars, five thousand dollars this year that we've not used it once. He's mad.
That sounds like a plan of fitness.
Yeah. Yeah, but that's your money. This is that money. And that's what he saw that. Uh, there's clerk training to help understand and utilize this, these services and, um, Josh needs your email. If you can get it to him, please. Josh Bender, if you would, please. Um, but this is something Josh is gonna bring up. He just wanted me to kind of share it with you guys and maybe you don't know nothing about it.
I have not heard anything about that.
I don't, I do not remember that.
I'll be interested to see if Paula does when, when you ask her because.
There's one that was signed and who was signed by. And that's what he's mad about. Because we've spent that money over the last four years, three years, and we've just wasted, and there's more. There's, there's more that he had in there that it's got.
I'm not even sure that was brought before council.
That's a problem. Well, that goes exactly right back to the conversation we just had. That we just had. It goes right back to that same, guys, this, if it wasn't, happened when I first started on council, but way to a more extreme level with Mr. Ken Sowers. So it was that far ago. Um, I don't remember the details I probably had, but it was bad.
When did that come through? Twenty twenty-two?
Um. So, uh, this is exactly why I was concerned about the spending rotation between seven thirteen, twenty-two. So, it, that, I mean, there's, there's more, so.
Well, when you see him.
He wants, no, he's gonna talk to you guys about it. He's good, he's good. He's not, he, he's saying, why are we not, you know, this is gonna make the clerk's job so easy. And he's, he's just beside himself on it. Uh, he sent Mr. Schwartz, uh, an email about what the answer's on everything, everything.
That would be a challenge, right?
That he would, yes.
I don't think anything was ever brought to council. I don't remember anything about that.
I just wondered, couldn't, Timmy, when we redo the spending, like when it goes to annual contracts and stuff like this, what's happening? Can you have all council members sign the annual contract?
Well, it, it, they, they, every contract is, always gets brought before you guys. You guys approve them.
And at least.
You know what I feel like this?
Well, I mean, normally.
But what would that, like, what would that do for us? But if, if, if they didn't know about this, what would that do for them? She's finding out about it three years later. So what does that, I mean, because what I make sure of is the agreements, any agreements that are signed goes before you guys. Whether I sign them or he signs them, and if they're not given out before you, I don't know about them. Which is gonna be a problem for somebody that's signing agreements without your guys' authorization. I mean, you, you see what I'm saying, Timmy? So they're, they're already brought before you guys. Any agreement, so if you're saying, hey, we would like to sign them at the end of the year.
Do you, I mean, like annual agreements like those, those are just keep on coming.
Yeah, yeah, we just, once you authorize them, they just keep, we just keep paying them. That's what we're, just like this one, we're authorizing Brian for Neptune. That service agreement that we're gonna pay every year, you're not gonna vote on that every year. He just makes sure that that's in his budget now that you guys approved of that contract.
Well, that's why it's important to have a good administrator like we got now.
Yes.
Cause he's, he's double checking things. You know, that's important because we didn't have that before and I think that's what's good about this is he's, he's doing other things.
I guess, yeah, you don't know them till they're called, that they're doing their job or not, right? You don't know. I mean, I thought Chase was doing a great job and I'm, I'm a Chase fan. I found out there's some things that was left neglected and, and I think that's why some of these people left. They knew that the roof was gonna come down on their heads because there was gonna be called into accountability. We have a team up here that's gonna support and you've got an administration up here that's gonna bring something to your attention. But this kind of stuff, it's falling through the cracks. Josh Bender is very, very upset about this. And I read the, I read the email that he sent out. It's, it's, it's as.
I'm glad he is.
Pleasant is, well, yeah, but see, but you shouldn't have to be, right? Everything should be coming from this body for the contracts anyhow.
Well, to come back to that other, Tim, when we had the one with the sheriff's department, the lawsuit that we had. We had.
It happened other times too. There were things we found out about afterwards that should have come before council that did not. And, you know, that's one of the things that tied our hands. We weren't able to do anything about it after the fact. So, that's why I came to you. That's why I said, things from the back door.
Well, if, if there's things coming behind that I don't even know about, then I assure you that will last. That will last very long, I can tell you that.
Right. Now, this was before, this was before.
So, it's just, he wanted me to bring that to your attention. He's very, very upset about it, just to let you know.
My point is, we all should be for much of the sense that we're not utilizing the service.
Um, another thing, that, I'm sorry, I, okay, so that was, that was, what, what were we at?
Well, we're still on financial.
Okay, that's why I wanted to bring that to your attention because I had to find it. I'll see, I'll see.
Okay, you're all good then?
I got a couple more things up.
All right. Any questions for Tim? All right, we're gonna move on to personal policy and organs. We do, Dave?
I don't have anything. Mr. Mayor, you have anything?
Yeah, that will take one of these out of, yes. So take one of the things off the desk. Um, so we've got, currently we have a policy that, and I think it's only for, I'm pretty sure I read it today, or they got read to me, um, but it only pertains to public utilities employees that get their licenses. And I think, I should ask Brian, Dick, can't remember what it costs for them to have, for the village to pay for their licenses, right? We pay for them. But anybody that maybe wants to go to school, we pay for it, right? What do we get in return? Well, that policy says that they have to stay with the, with us for, for one year, right?
If they don't, we have to reimburse.
Okay, so the dilemma, so there's a whole lot of discussion that needs to take place here and I think I've shared something, that I've talked about this to you guys in the past.
Yes, you have.
Well, I mean.
I mean, one of the things is Chuck Marson always told us, you're not getting your money back. If they openly, you're not getting your money back. Now, that may not, that was Chuck Marson. He said, and here's why. Because they owe you two thousand dollars and they openly, after they get to school, it's gonna cost you more than two thousand dollars to get that two thousand dollars back, right? It's by the time you litigate, you're gonna, you're, you're gonna be out more than two thousand dollars that you lost, right? So, there's gotta be a way that we can recoup our money. But anyhow, um.
Now, did you ask an attorney about that? Cause would that fall under small claims?
He's supposed to be asking, he, he, um, he's supposed to ask Paul Scott about that because they got into a different discussion.
Small claims would be a lot cheaper. You don't have to have an attorney.
Where do the small claims fall under? At what threshold? I know, but what, what threshold?
Fifteen thousand.
Is it?
Yeah, it used to be. So I don't know if it's still that high now and it only used to be like thirty-five dollars. But again, I don't know if that fee has been raised.
So what I'm.
And you don't need an attorney.
Yeah. So what I'm asking for is to him to talk to Paul Scott, give us language. I said, April wants to go to, I could sit down and talk to April about this extensively. She wants to go to this, it's human resources, uh, training. It's actual college. It's two thousand dollars. Um, but like I told her, I said, April, I'm, 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 I support it a hundred percent. She's already doing it up there. She needs, I said, but my concern is, I mean, April has made it clear in the past that, you know, she could leave at any time. I said, that's why we cross train, right? And you have a right to leave if you wanna leave. You don't wanna, or anybody here. But however, if we're gonna pay for a service, we intend to get that service in return. So, you know, I would like to see this agreement that for every thousand dollars that the, the village pays for any training, we get a year and a half return, right? So if you, if we spend two thousand dollars, you owe us three years. If we spend six thousand dollars, you owe us the nine years. You, you're locked in, like, right? We've gotta get a return for that investment. Guys, people have gone through the village of North Baltimore, got, we spent the money to pay for their training or their education, soon as they got it, they went off somewhere else and utilized their skills somewhere else for more money. I, you know, and maybe we do a maximum of, you know, we'll spend, we'll, cause I know some of the training back here for EMS is up to like six thousand dollars. Right? So maybe we paid six thousand dollars, but they are, they signed on with us for seven years, right? I don't know. That's something that we have to come up with. But anyhow, what I'm talking about is two different things. One is the policy and can it get, can we enforce it? That's a question for Paul Scott. And would this body allow April to go to this training, which would benefit us? She said she would sign an agreement.
Some, some places though.
For up to three years.
Have done prorating. So, let's say there's a three-year commitment and you get a wonderful job opportunity after two years, then you gotta pay that year prorated, just to be fair to the employee.
Sure, 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 sure. They wouldn't have to pay the whole thing back, right? So if we spent two thousand dollars to, for them to go to schooling and we said it's three years that they have to get back to the village, if they was here for two years, we don't ask for the whole two thousand dollars back, right? We, we would ask for seven hundred dollars or whatever, right? Whatever. Say you owe seven hundred dollars. The problem, what I've been told in the past by Chuck Marson, he's up there on the wall, was you are getting that money back. Don't even waste your time in court. That's what I was told. I don't know that that stands true today. That's what I've always stood on because that's what our legal comes. That isn't the first bad piece of advice he ever gave me, I'll tell you that. I mean, if I would say that, I would sit there.
And I don't know if this type of litigation can go up small claims, but it's what I'm talking into.
So, yeah, so it's something, but I would like, I would like, she really wants to go to this and she's gotta get signed up for it. So I'm gonna read this, just real quick. Um, so this is, that's why I brought it up under personal policy, because this is a, this is a policy that we're gonna have to create. But I think if April would sign an agreement, we should allow her to go to this. Um, Mayor Patterson, Councilman, would like to request approval to enroll in Human Resource Professional Course offered online through Paddock Career Center. And guys, she's doing more than this up here for us. This training would directly benefit the village by strengthening our human resource practices, improving how we manage hiring employees, onboarding, retention, workplace safety evaluations, in compliance with labor laws. It would prepare me to earn a nationally recognized HR certification, PHR, SPHR, or SHRM dash CP, which would allow me to handle HR matters more effectively and professionally. Cost of the course is nineteen forty-five and is fully online and self-paced with up to nine months to complete. Tuition includes all study material and certification preparation. This training will make the village's internal operations stronger by reducing the risk of legal or compliance issued by ensuring we are following proper planning, laws, procedures, strengthen our employment systems to support better retention and accountability, helping ensure we have consistent professional HR processes in places we continue to grow and add staff. Supporting administrator, administrator Bender by hiring day-to-day HR support by providing, excuse me, day-to-day HR support, allowing him to focus more on running village operations efficiently. Instead relying heavily on outside legal help or reacting when issues come up, this training would allow us to be more proactive and protect the village's best interest. It would also save the village money in the long run by avoiding costly HR mistakes and improving how we recruit and retain good employees. I believe this is a smart investment for the village's future operation and it would help me better serve both the staff and the community long term. Please let me know if you need any more details. I appreciate your concerns. See you later, Dick, because you won the ball more. Would, would, um, if she, if, I, one thing I would say, if April's gonna go towards this direction with your support, um, and be more of a manager, we'd have to take a look at her position. What it entails, I think she would have to start coming to the meetings and giving, not now. Saying, once she accomplished this and became more of a manager, right? Just like the rest of our department heads, she would need to, you know, come and give an account.
If she's only signed an agreement, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Well, what do you guys think? Up to two thousand dollars for how many years?
Well, I liked what you said as far as, would you say like.
A thousand dollars for a year and a half of service, but I think once you get up into like the six thousand dollar range, can you really require somebody to stay for nine years, right? So we'd have to just maybe take it in steps. So if it's up to this threshold, it's a amount, it's up to this threshold and then pro act, prorate it. So if, let's say we pay for somebody from the EMS, um, like it is six thousand dollars for them to, to do their, um, to increase their training, that's to go from like a, a basic to a, it's like six thousand dollars. Yeah. Um, then we would say, okay, we'll pay that upfront for you. Um, I think we need to get, like, in, in this case, I think we are to do it. In the case of anybody else, I think we need the policy because we gotta be able to say, well, we're only gonna be able to afford maybe one person per year, right? In each department, right? Because we can't go spending eighteen thousand dollars to train, right? And it's, we only got a sixteen thousand dollar surplus. So I think we need to have a handle on it. But, but I think that, um, just like Mr. Salters said, if we prorate wherever you're at within that, if you don't fulfill your obligation, you pay that portion of it back.
Now, we talked about in the past offering incentives to hire police officers. This would not be under the same policy, correct? That would be different?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, I'm just cramping. I apologize. Um, I'm just, I'm sorry, Dean.
No, it would be a different.
You saw where he crawled today.
It would, it would be a different policy. We wouldn't be under the same, right? If we get, if we offer incentives to, um, police officers to, to hire them, would that be different? Or are we looking?
Uh, then further training, are you saying? Yeah.
I'd like to see us do something for that as far as the police officers.
During going through academy?
Pardon me?
You hooked up, went through academy.
Yeah.
I just, I think there's one thing.
I might not understand.
Police and EMS people, we, after you complete your, your schooling, you have to take a state test. And you're only allowed to fail that test three times. And that test, last time I took it was a hundred fifty dollars just to take the test. So if you fail that, that three tests, you're gonna pay, say, six thousand dollars for me to go to school and I fail my test, you gotta remember that.
Right.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not going to.
We have the same in fire.
Yeah, at least we're not doing it until we hire them. So they've already.
No, I'm saying, like, if I were wanting to go on to my next step, medic, which is like ten to twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
You may pay that upfront. I only have three chances to take that test. If I fail all three, three tests, I don't get my license. You guys are up ten dollars.
That's a very good point.
Right. So that needs to be written in there.
So you have to take it back too.
If you fail the test and don't get a license.
So one of the concerns is like April saying, Aaron, I said, well, I would like to see is you pay for your schooling upfront and every time you complete whatever a mile marker is, we'll pay you that back. The problem is April don't have two thousand dollars to go to school. Our EMS people don't have six thousand dollars to, to continue their education. And they want to, and they wanna stay with North Baltimore, right? That's, so we're kinda having a dilemma, right? They don't have the money to do it, but my thoughts are to protect the village according to what, like Becky's saying is, we'll just, you go get your education and it costs you eight thousand dollars, we will give you, and we require you to be here for seven years. I don't know what it is. We will pay you back that, whatever that is per year up to seven years. So it might be, I'm not, I'm not good at math. Seventeen hundred bucks a year.
I have extensive.
And then if you don't fulfill that, we just keep the rest of that money. I, but they don't have the money upfront is what the problem is.
I've used this program. I've worked in it in previous employers. And one thing, we had thirty-five hundred employees, the company I worked for. Not one person was ever held to having to pay it back if they left. Not one.
Well, the village has been, the village has been stung in the past. I need to get this.
Yep. Now, I'll just, just tell you that right up front.
I think we need to have a.
The way ours, we do. The way ours worked was every semester I completed, okay?
If I got a B or better, a hundred percent. If I got a C, I didn't get a hundred percent. It was graded in what I was reimbursed. Um, now, just give me that information. I really think that this would be beneficial for April and I'm a hundred percent behind sending it and paying it.
I am too, as long as we get some commitment that we're not paying it for to go somewhere else to work.
And, and you've already given us that?
I, I can't give.
No, no, no.
Don't stay up here.
No, he gave us this information that she's willing to sign it, you know, so. I'm just telling you from experience.
How far will a non-compete go?
I'm sorry?
A non-compete clause in a, yeah. So if we pay for you to get a B in AMT and you get your EMT license and then you leave, then we can sue you for what we sent you to school for.
No, no, you can't, can you?
It's called a non-compete. I know, I couldn't, I couldn't build houses for two years after I left Wayne Hall.
Really?
Because they made me sign a non-compete on the way out the door.
So we need to keep that in mind when we talk to the attorney, will you please?
Yeah.
Because that's good information to have and that's what we, that's what we need to know.
Yeah, because if we get, if we get some, you know, send somebody to get their CDL.
Can I ask you, yep, can I, what would have happened if you would have built a house? There's what I think, so I understand, but is that, did you not build a house because you was compliant with the agreement that you signed? Or was there a legal-
There is a legal ramification.
But is it enforceable is what I'm asking.
For that, I-
That's your, but you didn't try-
It was about to keep someone, you know, of my personal stature from trying to find out what recourse was gonna be.
Right, but I guess, and I appreciate that, Dave, but it didn't with people in the past here. That's, that's where we've gotta try to protect.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we're saying, hey, you can't go somewhere and be a CDL driver unless you pay us for your license, then if they go and do that, then we would win, we should be able to win the judgment against them for the price of the license in our court.
Agreed. I hope so. And if we do, this will be simple.
Right.
I just know talking to the gentleman up there in the picture, he says, yeah, you ain't gonna, you're not gonna win that. Maybe he just didn't want the work. I don't know. He didn't want the headache. I don't know.
Now, side note, my concern is that if we do this for April and somebody else comes to us before we get this policy written and we get it, you know, because she only wanted to do one year, and somebody comes to us and wants to, wants to take a class, are we setting a precedent?
Yeah, I'm saying one class per, per, um, not training, not, not like onboard training, you know what I mean? Like, um, there's training for like highly, talking about like to advance your, like, or to get your licenses or whatever, right? I mean, I mean, we're-
I'm just, I'm just asking.
But within each department.
What?
In, in each department.
Right, well, what if somebody else in the same department comes to us and wants to further their, you know, education like April is doing? And we say no until we get this policy, you know what I'm saying? I, I'm just trying to cross every T and dot every I, just making sure we're thinking of everything if we're going to-
But the precedence is already set. Precedence is already set with the water department. Precedence is set.
That, isn't that mandatory training though? They can't operate their equipment without it. Isn't that kinda mandatory?
No, they're not mandatory when you get their licenses.
Well-
Brian Maltz don't have his, Brian Maltz is the most senior person in that plant. I don't, I think he's got a one and maybe a one. A water, I'm pretty sure he don't have, no, it's not mandatory.
But I feel like we need those to run that department. Is that true? Those licenses are needed to run the water department?
Of course they are.
Okay, is this needed to run this department? It's needed to run it more efficient, but is it needed? And that's where I'm, I'm just trying to-
I would say she's already doing it, being self-taught, which is a problem.
Right.
But that's a problem. Guys, the thing she's taking care of up here is, I, I don't, she's taking care of stuff that nobody ever said, hey, go take care of. She just said, nobody else is doing it, so she had to self-trade herself.
And I'm not against her.
No, I get it, but so now she's saying, hey, get me some help here and see how far we go. Go ahead.
Right, I'm just concerned that other people could come to us.
You mean, if we go ahead, if the case go ahead and agree for her to do this right now, is what they're saying, without the policy in place? We're gonna say, yes, April, go ahead and do this, start tomorrow. We don't have a policy in place unless they add some-
Showing favors to them.
The policy is in place.
Oh, if they-
It's just that only in place for the utility department. There's a policy in place.
Well, the best-
That you got to stay for so long. The policy's in place. It's just not in place at this point for the whole village. Right, and that's what we're talking about. I've been talking about it for quite some time.
Right, and I'm on board with that. I'm just concerned that we're doing it before the policy's in place and it could be having-
Let's keep talking and let's do it.
I'd say we just, yeah, put policy together, but this thing's like around, this is about to start.
Have that done by Tuesday there.
Yeah, let's have that done.
It's about to start.
And, and come on over and help me build a house.
I think this tape starts in June.
Do we need to, do we need to take action or do you and, can you and Josh give the okay?
No, Josh will give the okay on that if you guys support her doing this, right? But you can't vote on that. You have to vote on it Tuesday.
Right, right.
Right, but this isn't something that should really be-
It's not.
Like I said, I think we're all in favor of it. We just wanna make sure.
Well, then we need to just do it. We need to just, it's, it's needed up here. My only draw, the need is absolute. My concern is, is she gonna stay afterwards, right? That's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I think you need to do an agreement that she agreed to sign. I think Josh needs to come up with an agreement and that needs to be signed.
It wants it signed?
I think we also need to get our policy in place as quickly as possible.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Tuesday, Dave, get that ready, Tuesday. Have it ready.
You don't have to have that ready Tuesday, but we need to, we need to, we need to move on that.
I agree with you.
I've been talking about it for quite some time. But we gotta have legal, get with Josh Bender, if you would please, when we're talking about it, because Josh was supposed to talk to him today about it. I said, but we need to know this, right? And, and so, um, he'll talk to Mr. Stapp, well, what language we can put in there to ensure that, along with the, the stuff with operating equipment or whatever.
Right, right.
So those two things, and we should be able to throw this together. But I think we're, are you guys all right with her going to the tr, it's needed. I'm telling you, she's already doing most of this. We just don't know if she's doing it right, which could be a lie of malice to the village.
I'm agreeing with it.
Yeah.
And then you'll come back to us also with a recommendation about what we, if we change her job.
Job, yeah, that's, that's after all this, we'd have to sit down and talk about it. Because there would certainly have to be, I mean, we'd have to take a look at it, absolutely.
Anything else? All right, we're going to, any questions for Dave?
Excuse me, take a break for a second.
We're going to move on to economic, community development, Bill?
I think the only thing I can say is that the mayor and Josh, now, we'll get together soon for our next meeting on the-
Yes.
Dinner.
Yes.
Any, anything else?
Any, any questions?
No questions, we're going to move on to village administrator. Does Josh have anything that he left to go over? Says nothing.
I already, I already have. I'm, I'm already kinda, everything I'm going over, he's kinda throwing at me.
How about Mr. Klaus for, well, is there any, is there any questions for Josh that we need to pass on?
Just wish, wish his boy a happy birthday.
Yep, I did that when I walked out, so.
Okay, um, village finance officer, Mr. Klaus, does he have anything?
I don't think so. Um, the one thing that, I'm sorry, I gotta back up to Mr. Bender. So we had a, so we had Patty Hutchison, I wish that up or he could, he could pull, I wish he could pull up there. Patty Hutchison lives, um, down on South Taylor Street. I don't even know the road, Beckett, it ties into, where it comes around down there and, okay? Um, Beckett Street, guy that, ah-
Is that the one that goes alongside the tracks?
Goes right home tracks, comes around like that. It goes right back out to Water Street.
Looks like an alley.
Yep, well, Beckett Street runs here. It comes around like this. I'm sorry if I'm, if you can't see it, I'm not a driver, so I don't wanna drive. I'm, I'm gonna have it up here real quick. Let me show you guys, because this is pretty important.
It's on the south side.
So, so, yeah, we're on the south side of the tracks.
So it's beach or-
Right here. Beckett comes here like this. So there's a, I think, I think there's a road here, then it turns into Beckett here, runs here, and then comes back here to Taylor, South Taylor.
Is that Zil, Zilmen or something?
No.
South Bates.
South Bates, thank you. Beckett. She's got a trailer right here she lives in. Beckett, and here's her driveway. Beckett Street actually continues to run this way, but it's no longer there. It, it, I'm telling you, it goes there. Um, her husband in the past with Michael Brillhart and whoever, I think it's her husband, donated a piece of property down here, um, to the village that we sold, right? In turn, that we would abandon that for them. What I'm told, she has a bunch of documentation, even a signed agreement from Michael Brillhart, that has nothing to do with, she said it was word of mouth, that he said he would take it to council and, and share, and get us to abandon that in, in return for this. Um, she's got a bunch of deeds and all that stuff. She'll come up here and show us. And it's really not that big of a deal. So, so the way that you abandon something, I've got the terms, the conditions here. Um, you gotta get, oh, this is CSX, you've got, um, the elevator or Midwood. And then you got, uh, Mr. Bear here who's passed away.
I think it's Lucky Farms now.
Is it? Okay, Lucky Farms. So everybody has to sign an agreement to allow this to be, or he might not have to because they, they're not on this half of it. She, she's only gotta get these two. She's never gonna be able to get them two to sign anything, right? And I'll wipe that off in a second. So, but right now, it's her driveway. There's no road there. The roads at some point in time got-
Turned.
Yeah, got turned into, uh, South Taylor. Thank you. Um, it's, it's actually her driveway. Um, there's a garage of all kinds of stuff in her backyard that's over top of it. She's asking, hey, when are you guys gonna fill your, your side of the agreement to get me this? Said, I didn't know nothing about it. Um, so the process, according to the Robin's Code, was gonna abandon or, or, um-
Eliminate it, close it?
Is that the word I'm looking for? I apologize. Um, to vacate the alley. So if you're gonna vacate an alley, you go to the middle of the alley, that, that, I do know this because I was a part of this in the past. That part of the, that half of the alley goes to this hole, this half of the alley goes to this hole. There's no other half of the alley right there. The whole alley's kinda on her property. Um, but the part that she's asking us to vacate, right? Other than what goes down to Midwood, she's not asking for that because that's not on her problem. Um, there's a process that we have to go through to vacate, right? Josh, who's gonna start that process if it's all right with you guys, says, Mayor, Mayor, I have to further review. Here's a summary of the required steps under the Robin's Code for a street or alley vacation. Full petition must be submitted to my office for review. She's come out, she's sat down with both of us and showed us all the documents. I created a petition form for this purpose, which is attached. I don't know what he did with it. He never get, give it to me, it's, it's in there. Sorry, Mike. The fee of the zoning for our zoning is a hundred dollars, which the petitioner also is responsible for adding and recording costs. He's gotta look at what the, um, advertisement is, because you gotta advertise it. It says, what's the conditions of the, to see the matter scheduled for council consideration through an ordinance? If all the money property owners sign the petition, which that's not gonna happen, the public knows requirement under ORC, some to interest this publication at least twenty days prior to the final council approval, they would wait. So what, what that's saying is if they sign the petition, then the publication, the twenty days and all that stuff goes away. They're already agreeing to it. If not, we have to go through this process, which is twenty days and, and, and we have to advertise it. We have to have three readings on it, ask you to advertise for more than twenty days to let everybody know that anybody come up and, and, and contest it. In other words, while we could wait the hundred dollar fee, the village would still incur advertising costs in the courier. I don't think we have to anymore. We don't have to advertise in the courier. Am I correct in saying that by the Robin's Code? Do you know anything about that, Sue? It's into a circulation, I'm sorry.
I think that's good.
It's, it's, it's any newspaper circulation that we have to add, put it right on our website. I would, I would think we just do our regular advertising, so we wouldn't have to incur any cost. And I would ask that we would, would we consider waiving the hundred dollars because according to her, there was an agreement in the past that Michael Brillhart was supposed to have taken care of this, right? Um, I don't know if that to be true or not true, but she had a lot, she told me the exact same thing in her, she called me down there to talk to her. Did the exact same thing when I called her up here. The story didn't change, so I don't, have no reason to challenge it. Um, so, it, are we all right with Josh starting the process of following? That does us no good. It does her all kinds of good down there, right?
Sounds like we dropped a bone.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a reoccurring thing that we continue to keep cleaning up.
Look at the surprise.
So, so just one, so I, I would tell Josh that, yes, that's, so that was the only, the other thing Josh wanted me to bring up.
Any other questions? Well, that was for Josh, okay. So now, village finance officer, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Klaus? You don't have anything to present?
No, 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 no.
Then we will go on to mayor.
Two more things real quick. Um, one being the new ways to sponsor for, this is just a little bit of a box, this, this one. New ways to sponsor the twenty twenty-five North Baller Pope, my very similar reading program. Do you know anything about this? Becky, can you please share some of that with us because I read it.
Every year we do, the library does some reading, we sponsor because the stuff is very expensive that we do. Um, we try to bring programs in like magician. Um, we do have, um, a pottery guy coming this year and, um, paint. Anyway, we're just asking for donations from businesses that, that we can use to-
Just a spot.
Better our summer reading program this year.
Your circle up above.
Oh, yeah, did you listen to Becky?
See, I told you.
The thing that we would, I mean, I'm not sure what she put in here. If you, we would prefer a card, a Visa card, something like that, because if we cash or check to go through our general fund and then we don't get to use those funds until next year.
So you're asking for a Visa card of some sort?
That way we can buy, yep, that way we can buy additional snacks for the kids or we can do one additional program with the kids. Or crafting, our craft supply for, it's going up and up and up each, each month, it seems like. So we're just asking for small donation, whether it's the, she's got it in-
Twenty-five fifty, hundred.
Or, or it can be whatever you guys want. It doesn't have to be those notes.
What would you ask?
Do something. I just, I think we need to do something. What do you think?
I agree.
Donate a hundred dollars to the kids?
I'm, I'm good with that.
In the form of a Visa?
I don't know.
And can I get a copy of it?
You can.
I'd like to take it to my work.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, do, do you wanna get him the copy of that after the meeting?
You could send that to, to Bill as a ministerial lead too. He can disperse it to the churches.
Okay.
Get that done, Bill.
When do you guys meet this, what does this take off?
Uh, June, I suppose. June first, we start, we have a big kickoff.
Boy, I'm gonna give this job back to you, so.
We're closing the library at two o'clock to get everything set up for our big kickoff.
The only, the only other thing that I have, so, yep, so, you guys, you all right with donating a hundred dollars?
Just to throw this at you, we have a bounce around at our church at Castle. If you wanna use it, you're free to use it.
We cannot use bounce house because it's library and it's comfortable, cover us.
Oh, okay.
But thanks for the offer.
I gotta, I gotta ball out that church thing.
So, okay, perfect. So I wanna thank Mr. Gary Happner for considering to step in anytime that Becky's ill or can't be here. Um, thank you, Gary, we really appreciate that. Um, would you please consider taking the training that Josh is gonna set up from Unico once we get there for both of you to help you out? And then what I'm asking you guys is consider what kind of a stipend we could pay Gary, because we can't expect anything from Gary to be free. I mean, especially, and I'm not even trying to say it's be funny, I, I, as Becky can tell you, I go, 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 right? So it's, it's-
And I will be tapping out of that discussion, so.
Yeah, you can't, don't, yeah, please don't.
As long as he pays a tithe to his local church, I'm all for it.
Oh, you can't say that. You can't put your dishes on.
Oh, darn, darn.
I'm just saying that Tuesday, he's going to be, and he'll sit there and be-
Awesome, so for trainers.
Um, I, I've been very pleased.
These are per meeting basis.
Yeah, when we talk about this, this stipend or whatever, I, I'm very pleased that, uh, mayor has given us some good suggestions, because we've recently done that for a couple, for Matt and Josh, so.
Yeah, so we don't have to come up with anything tonight, just consider it and we'll talk about it Tuesday where we can actually take action on it, then anytime Gary sits in, um-
I will say, uh, working with him on the church side, uh, details are very important to him, so.
Oh, right.
So that's what you want.
And, and I'm, and I'm telling you, this Unico will help tremendously simplify this job. It's supposed to Josh and it's gonna, it's for us to not be utilizing this as, as, and, and, um, the AI thing that he, he does is amazing to help out with the notes and stuff, so he's doing what he can to help simplify this thing.
I have my notes and make copies, so.
I don't have anything else in that, so just consider what we would, um, um, consider paying for the clerk in, in, um, Becky's app. in, in, um, Becky's absence.
Would you wanna say anything about enforcement office, enforcement code office?
Uh, I, I don't know, he just shared that with me today. He is, I think he's offered the job to somebody, I don't know, very many details about it.
Okay.
I mean, we was.
On Tuesday?
We won't know something Tuesday, yes. Should be, should be ready to take, um, ready for action Tuesday, so.
I have a question, I, I don't know where it goes in this thing, though. Um, last month, I was dizzy all last month, constantly, so I, I probably, probably talked about it, but I don't remember. I just wanna get on our church calendar when we're thinking of the good old summertime festival.
Not this year.
No, for next year.
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have?
Not the summertime, we're talking about, uh, uh, the committee's talking about a Fourth of July picnic. Fireworks in the park, and, um, something real talk and knocking it out, and then something downtown this year towards the fall, almost like some sort of a smoke-off started off simple, we was talking about Bill and the rest of the committee that was here. Um, and starting it off small, and letting this thing kinda grow, we'd like to have maybe a car show, um, maybe not try to utilize all of Main Street, maybe we do, we'll see how this thing grows. But we're, we're kinda waiting on five-one, C-three day.
Just to let you know, I, I did talk to the theater owner, Sean, once about, about if we did something on Main Street like that, and he'd be willing to, and it may change, it's been two or three years, but he said we could probably project a film outside on Main Street when it gets dark, so just throw that in your.
Hope there's, yeah.
Yeah, and then he would have Snack Shack open and popcorn, and that'd be a nice way to, you know, do an evening closeout, but he said that was a possibility, so.
So maybe you'll have to address, uh, the committee when we get together.
You and I'll need to get together with Tim and see if we wanna, uh, do a car, car show, I think we can do one, simplify it a lot.
Which, which one, July or?
No, it would be, it would be in the fall, we're talking about, I think, I don't remember the date.
That's this fall.
Yeah, we're trying to throw something together for this fall, we need to do something. Citizens need something.
Oh, so you're with them for something for this year?
Yeah, we're, we're all.
And then?
Yeah, we're working on.
July picnic is twenty-twenty-six?
Yep, yeah, because we're working on a lot of things.
So I'll, I'll remind you, A S E P, I'll shoot you a text and whatever.
So this is October, the, the, for the car thing?
Well, we're talking about, we, we still have to do, and that's something I'd like to talk to you guys about, Tim. We, we need to put another committee together for the Halloween, if you guys are interested in helping out with that. I don't know if you guys are or not, I mean, we're gonna need to know. Um, if not, it's no big deal, we'll figure it out. But I think you guys did a fantastic job of picking the ball up last year and, and making that happen. Um, but, but, uh, I know, we were talking about a committee that takes care of the festivals and, and the two kinda get together, and then maybe get another committee together that we take care of the Halloween parade. Um, now, you'd like to see another parade, you know, like a Thanksgiving parade or something like that, that goes into like a Christmas, a theme, like, uh, like, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, I was waiting to hear you were done.
Please.
Oh, I, I just thought, you know how they do the witches' walk in Sandusky?
Oh.
Have you ever heard of it?
No.
So, uh, they do this thing where the witches, they like, everybody gets dressed up as a big competition or whatever. But it's grown, it's getting to be a pretty big thing over there. And nobody has yet asked them to walk in Halloween parade in their town.
Really?
So that may be something to help generate people.
I'm afraid of witches.
Actually, I believe, I, I don't know if, you know who, uh, Kerry Corbin is, right?
Yeah, yeah, Jim Corbin's daughter?
Yeah.
Or daughter or sister?
Yeah, daughter.
Daughter, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, her and her friends, they won it last year.
Yeah.
Yeah. They went as Sister Witches, and it was, uh, they, they get all the makeup and they go all out on it.
Oh, my goodness.
But I thought that would be a cool addition if you did the Halloween parade.
Something with the Halloween parade.
And get the witches to come over and walk again, any chance.
Did they throw candy out? Gotta throw candy out.
Didn't you ever see that story about candy and witches? It's dangerous.
Did you, of course, just change. Do you use those? With your company, the tree lighting?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Yeah, I, I think we've just limited ourselves, right? And we need, uh, we need to open the floodgates, I think goes right into your decorative.
The church, by the way, our church approved doing that, you know, as far as our side of doing it, but.
We got the bucket.
He'll have to let us know if the bucket truck can reach, can reach that tree and all that stuff. Because I.
Which should be able to.
Oh, sure.
Well, the, the last one couldn't, so.
We'll just drive right up the yard.
I don't care.
It'll be frozen. It'll be frozen, everyone's gonna be in the.
It's grass, who cares?
We'll fix the sidewalk.
The rest of, that sounds funny, but that's why they put it on the one at the library, because of damage to the yard.
Well, you can put plywood.
You didn't, yeah, we do it at work all the time.
That was, that was, we don't want it here anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the problem, but, okay, anything else for Mayor?